All that.
Yeah, like it's literally posted.
Alright, is everybody, everybody mic'd up?
Our one.
You guys are good?
But no, do I miss it? Not, not a day goes by.
Everybody's mic'd up? Okay, let's get rolling.
Well, he asked me to, I think they were testing the camera.
Are we already on? Alright, good evening to everyone. Call the August 19th City of Mount Vernon Council Meeting to Order. If everybody saw or had an opportunity to go through the agenda, which I'm sure everybody had, there's two items that we will have to motion to table. That would be E1 and F2. So when we get to those items, I'll ask for a motion. Two separate motions, but we can do those back to back. So with that said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Next item, Communications. Is there anybody that would like to address the council? Please come forward. Mr. Delancy, please come forward.
Jay Delancy, 509 Scobie Road. I wanted to, um, I'm kinda impressed that the city bought the church over there by me, but I wanted to make sure that people kinda thought in the back of their head too, that since Mount Vernon's gonna grow to save money for the taxpayers, that maybe you would leave the sanctuary and maybe possibly make that a council chamber in the future. And then actually utilize that space too as a fundraiser for the canine unit, you know, like having a Christmas bazaar type crap thing or cookie cell, think of that type of stuff to keep the dog around. And maybe if these guys need extra equipment or something, use as a fundraiser type thing too, being that such a large opening in the middle. And then too, I kinda thought that's kind of a good place for it, isn't it? Right in the middle of a police station? You know, if you have a lot of people there and somebody's mad or something. And then I wanted to, to, being a neighbor, Chris said they were talking about building a building. I was wondering if they could look into building like rental type looking garages, maybe on the east side next to Crowe's and use that as a, um, privacy fence slash buffer barrier for noise and stuff. And maybe build enough for the squad cruisers and then have enough too to, you know, put away like stolen bikes or abandoned bikes and other crap they find laying around the city limits somewhere to store it. And then maybe they could possibly sell it to raise it, use funds towards something. So I wanted to just make sure that people kinda keep that in mind. And to date, I was gonna let you know that since the American Legion is, we've raised almost $4,400 this year. So the recycling is working, not great because the prices are way down. Just think if it was 160 instead of 60 right now, what we'd be getting and what we'd have sitting in our bank account. We have been giving money to HACAP, on a flag for over there, the Wellness Center in Lisbon. And then they've given some money and some other things, but nobody's here for me to verify what and what. So I'm just keeping you guys informed that is working.
Alright. Thanks, Jay. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Brian.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? Alright, seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of council from the August 5 meeting. Approval of liquor license for Bon Appetit as well as Biggs BBQ.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Next item, Public Hearing. So again, this would be the, the first item that entertain a motion to table.
Move to table item E1.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. We'll move on to ordinance F2. Again, entertain a motion for the, for that item.
Still moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Alright. Move on to F1, Ordinance 852019A, amending the White Pines Plan Unit Overlay District identified in Ordinance 1-27-2019C. This is the second reading. Chris, I don't believe you had anything to add to this, correct?
I think additional.
Entertain a motion unless anybody has any questions or has had any feedback.
Make a motion to approve the second reading. Of Ordinance 8-5-2019A.
I'll second.
Any comments? No comments? Roll call, please, Sue.
West.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ron Bush.
Yes.
Weesler.
Yes.
Alright. Trying to get caught up here on the iPad. Next item, Resolutions for Approval. Resolution 8-19-2019A, approving and authorizing a form of loan and disbursement agreement by and between the City of Mount Vernon, Iowa and the Iowa Finance Authority, and authorizing and providing for the issuance and securing the payment of 1.766 million sewer revenue capital loan notes, Series 2019, the City of Mount Vernon, Iowa, under the provisions in the Code of Iowa, providing for a method of payment of said notes and approving tax exemption certificate. Chris?
All that so that we can start to draw down on our SRF loan.
Yep.
So we've already got the money. We just want, need to be able to pay it out.
You've gone through two resolutions now. Basically, one was the statement to SRF that we're requesting the dollars. The second was to enter in an agreement. Now the third is to start requesting reimbursement.
Gotcha. Anybody else have any questions for Chris? Or otherwise, it's just standard procedure.
And we've got a 20-year repayment schedule attached.
I'll move to approve Resolution 8-19-2019A.
I'll second that.
Any comments? No comments? Roll call, please, Sue.
Rose.
Yes.
Weesler?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Alright, next item, Resolution 8-19-2019B, directing the advertisement for sale and approving electronic bidding procedures and official statement. Chris?
This is for the refinancing. So it's not new money that we're going out to borrow. We're basically setting the procedures and then the bid documents then for the refinancing of the Build America bonds.
And this is what we've talked through the last, what, two previous council meetings?
Correct. And as I stated, I have the official statement, but it is 125 pages long. So if you really wanna look at it, it's in my office or if anybody from the public does.
I'll move approval of Resolution 8-19-2019B.
I'll second. Any comments? No comments? Roll call, please, Sue.
Ron Bush.
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Weesler?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Alright, next item, Resolution 8-19-2019C, setting dates of a consultation and public hearing on a proposed amendment number six to the Mount Vernon Urban Renewal Plan in the City of Mount Vernon, Iowa, State of Iowa, Mount Vernon, State of Iowa.
So we are, as that's been in the paper, obviously buying a church for a new police department. And we are going to borrow those funds internally from cash that we have on hand, but I would like the ability to be able to repay those funds. So what you're doing here is allowing us to basically use tax increment financing. Should we choose to do that to repay ourselves? We can still use the general fund. There's other areas that we can repay ourselves with, but in order to potentially utilize TIF to repay ourselves, we need to amend the plan itself to include the church as part of an overall project. So what we're planning or doing, or what I'm planning on doing, is borrowing money out of depreciation accounts and then franchise fees and being able to repay those if you would like. You can repay them with interest. But utilizing a TIF or having the ability to utilize TIF would only be prudent. Should you choose to do that in the future too, it's a funding source that you have available, so.
Does this provide any limitations on the use of TIF in the future that we'll be hindered by by making this?
Now, if you remember when we, when we did the Community Wellness Center, we always, like I said before, we've tried to stay within 5 to 750,000. The Wellness Center borrowing gets us to about 500,000 on average. So we left us a couple hundred thousand dollar gap. You don't have, if you, you know, we're not gonna call ourselves. So if you don't make it a year, you don't have to. But it does allow us to repay those depreciation accounts and franchise fees with, with other funds as well. So it's the best way that I could find outside of depleting one of the reserve accounts because this was an unexpected expense that kinda fell into our lap. So borrowing internally, we can, like I said, charge ourselves interest if we would like. This just gives us a couple different payback methods. And I don't wanna leave anything off the table.
Yep. So I just wanna make sure I'm reading this table that's included on like five and the top of page six. Cause number three, it's the financial information one. And so our July 2019 constitutional debt limit is 13.5 million. Our current outstanding is 10.8, 10.9 if you round. And then the proposed amount of indebtedness to be incurred is 3.3 million.
So anytime we do an amendment to the plan, they always, the bond attorney will always ask me, are there any other projects that are hanging out there that we might look at in the future? So that 3.6 includes, we haven't even started this discussion, but should we have discussions as it relates to the pool? There's abilities there utilizing tax increment financing dollars. Should you choose to do that? Again, we've had zero conversations.
So we're not committing 3.3?
No, we're not committing any of those 3.3.
We're just opening the ability to use TIF to pay for these things.
Yes, so I included monies in there to extend infrastructure sewer to the church property as well, which would get sewer to the north side of the tracks. So none of that has been researched. It costs us money, albeit a small amount of money, but it does cost us money every time we amend this plan and attorney's fees. So the, Allers Cooney is always very prudent on, is there anything else hanging out there right now that you can think of that you would want to include? And once we include it, we don't have to amend the plan again in the future.
Sure. Okay. Alright, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Two questions, not about the financing part, but referral to this, to that building. Date of possession, has that been set yet?
We have 45 days from the time it was signed, and yes, that has been signed, so.
Early October?
Yes, and I have the date for you. I can send.
But it is set?
It is set.
And did we get over the mineral rights? Wasn't there an issue with?
We, we left the mineral rights in and we added the police station specifically as a condition. But for the most part, that condition's kind of stayed. I just had them add police department in there so that nobody could claim that we weren't using it as a PD. We could really live with the other thing. It's just because it's essentially going to be a police department. We could have added some things with, in regards to the mineral rights as far as the depth was concerned, but we were really getting down to the nth hour. And as I talked to Troy, he just kinda stated, if you can live with these, which we could, he goes, I would just get it signed. But they added the, the police department to it, so.
It's my understanding that that's a provision that they have and just about all there in land.
Yes. They were actually more added about mineral rights than anything.
That's interesting.
What kind of timeframe are you looking for the payback on? I mean?
Probably five years.
Five years.
I don't wanna overtax any one entity and the funds that we're borrowing from are depreciation accounts that we don't have product slated for. So we could, we could take five years, we could take longer. That's really up to the council. There's again, you're essentially borrowing from yourself at this point, so.
Well, I'll make a motion to two, Resolution 8-19-2019C.
Do we need a public hearing date?
Uh, it's, it's in there.
Okay. Sorry, missed it.
It's in the actual resolution.
I assume it's the third?
Yes, there's two dates. For now, we will be September 16th. It's on page seven of the actual resolution itself.
Motion with that date, then.
With that clarification, I'll second.
There it is, yeah.
Comments? No comments? Roll call, please, Sue.
Weesler?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ron Bush?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Alright, we'll move on to motions for approval. Consideration of Claims List is the first item. Anybody have any questions? Otherwise, entertain a motion.
Oh, actually I did. Nope, not that one. Hold on. The very first item was $300,000 to Garland. Don't we usually do those through pay orders? Or is this?
Yeah, so you'll, you actually approve that.
Did we do that? Okay.
And then?
Okay. And now this is just the writing?
Once you agree the actual pay application, then at the next meeting, you'll see the actual.
Yep. Alright, thank you. Having said that, I would move approval of the claims list as presented.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Next item, Discussion and Consideration of Change Order Request Number 26 for the Lester Burris Family Community Wellness Center. Chris?
So this is for additional handholds on the rock climbing wall? There's a basic package when this is presented, and that's what the architects put in there. Matt and Sarah have since met with a rock climbing expert out of Cedar Rapids who has agreed to consult on this. And one of the items that he put forward is a horizontal climbing situation. So he suggested that we almost double the amount of handholds that we do have. We did look at just buying them outright, and it was actually more expensive than what their, the entire change order request is by a couple hundred dollars. So we're suggesting that we go ahead and approve change order number 26. For those keeping track, yes, we have skipped 23, 24, and 25. You have approved up through 22, and I'm waiting for information on 23, 24, and 25. I can tell you one of those is $521. So it's not a significant amount, but those others are forthcoming. Just waiting on additional information. So with that, answer any questions, but extremely excited about this gentleman. He's talked about holding programs and he didn't really call them competitions as much as just?
Contest, competitions, programs, teaching classes.
Kind of excited about our facility and having this ability and is excited to consult with us in the future, so.
Interesting.
Question from Matt. Are we limited by the number of harness systems? Is how many people can be on the wall at one time?
Yeah.
And how many is it? Was it four?
So we have four autoblades that are there, but we, the reason there's four or more that we've purchased, so that we can have one waiting, so that they're not taking them off while everybody's waiting for them to take them off. So we have four more that we're purchasing in that change order. And then the handholds are, yeah, for horizontal traverse climbing, which we talked about adding. And then as well as this individual, we're gonna hire to clean our holds, cause you'll have to clean them. So as he's cleaning the holds, he'll take them down and he'll put another set up so that the rock wall, the routes will still be able to be utilized. So that's another additional amount of, of holds.
Interesting.
And do we need, if you're doing traverse climbing, do you need a harness? If you're staying?
No, you do not need a harness. But we're only allowed to go so high.
Right, yeah. I mean, but the idea is to be able to go vertically instead of horizontally.
Spiderman, no sideways.
Yeah, totally around.
Yeah, correct, yep.
Okay.
Cause the padding will stay on the floor as you're climbing, so that'll be your support system. And you're not allowed to go up to a certain height.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Anybody else have any other questions? Otherwise, entertain a motion for change order number 26.
I'd move approval of change order number 26 for the Lester Burris Family Community Wellness Center, total of $2,334.78.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Next item, Discussion and Consideration of Engagement Letter with Allers Cooney Urban Renewal Plan.
That seems kinda backwards since you already adopted the resolution, but that's just the way that the agenda works out. Their rates are there. It's an hourly rate. I would say on average, this process takes anywhere from $2,000 to $4,000, depending on how extensive it, it gets. But I would expect this one to be somewhat on the low side, just because it's not as, as extensive as the last amendment that we put together. But hence, kinda the conversation before about adding things so we don't have to amend regularly.
Any questions? Otherwise, yeah. Can't really go back at this point. Entertain a motion?
Can we look at enough to exceed price?
It's difficult to do, just because, I wanna say it's kind of a moving target. That's why they, in, in some instances, for certain items like the development agreement, they were able to give us a set amount on what it would cost. This is slightly different. I can just give you a, a range. There's really only two bond attorneys in, in Iowa that are used heavily. Allers is one of them. So their rates are actually quite in line with our city attorney as well. So I will tell you that I've dealt with them for the last three and a half years, and they've never overextended their welcome by any means. It's always, Nathan, who is working on this, is very distinct and follows everything kinda to a T. So I'm quite confident and they will get it done as cheap as, as they're allowed to do, but I don't have an actual range for it yet.
Okay. I move to approve the scope of engagement for Allers Cooney.
I would second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Next item, Discussion and Consideration of Shelving Purchases for the Lester Burris Family Community Wellness Center.
Shelving quote is just under $20,000, $19,909.30. Wasn't bid as part of the project because it's kind of custom-built, kind of designed based upon the spaces that we have. As I said before, it wasn't part of Garland's bid, but it was part of the overall plan that Matt and I presented. So there's, we had about $100,000 in security. We had $100,000 in equipment. So washer, dryer, things like that, you're going to be seeing as all pre-planned. So this was kind of a known expense. And Matt has utilized every number of cranny. I will say, anything that makes me feel comfortable. He does like to try and push the limit.
He never hurts to ask, doesn't he?
What are these shelving units made out of? Are they plywood or are they like that? Oh, they're metal. Okay.
That's good. Heavy duty?
Adjustable. Are they adjustable?
Yeah, all of them are adjustable as far as the distance between the shelves and yeah, a lot of flexibility.
Okay.
That's what we took in consideration. Some of it is off the, off the floor, so we can put some stuff up off the floor, especially in the storage room in the community room. Those table, or excuse me, the chair dollies that we have, they're gonna be fairly high, so we had to get some stuff up off the floor. So yeah, trying to use like Chris said, every inch that we can.
So there's something here that looks kinda like lockers. Are those included in this?
Are you referring to a certain?
Storage 123.
Yeah, so the storage room has what we call a space saver. Basically, it slides.
Oh.
So it's a, it's on a track, so we'll be able to open like?
Imagine like a library system that they just move in.
Like medical records.
Okay, I know where you're talking about.
We're all envisioning like 1972 movies, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's not lockers for patrons to use, but.
Where do those come into play? Are we gonna be seeing?
So there are copies on the second floor, and there are a limited amount of lockers in locker rooms. One thing that we did on our travels was notice that they weren't utilized heavily. Everybody that we had talked to said, whatever you plan for lockers, get about half. We didn't in this, I mean, we still have less than what we would probably feel like we need, but they don't get utilized. We have more than what we had originally planned simply because there is a potential addition in there, so.
Yeah. So how many, what kind of capacity are we talking on lockers? How many? Do you remember off the top of your head, just Karen, while we're on the subject?
There's large lockers and there's small lockers. There's two different types. I would say the large lockers, I think there's probably like 24 of them, I think. And then the smaller ones is probably 30, somewhere in that ballpark.
Yep.
Seems reasonable for the number of people that are in there for an hour period of time.
Yeah, I mean, if that's in both the men's and the women's, that's 100 people.
Yeah.
Without any problem, so.
That's pretty close in capacity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry, I just thought that looked like lockers and that's what brought up the conversation.
Any questions? Otherwise, entertain a motion.
I know Matt wants new equipment on a new building, but are we gonna inherit any storage capacity at the church? Or is that down the road?
Not at this facility. I think we, our plan is, my current plan right now is, once we move Doug and the PD out to that facility, we will reevaluate this location. I don't know if he's excited about it or not, but I would like to move Nick up here closer to me.
He's not.
So Nick, Heather, and I would likely be on one side and then finance on the other. All of the walls that are up there right now can be punched through, so the goal would be to, to have walkways and doors. So it's all interconnected behind the glass. That actually frees up the old engineer's office, and we will have parks and rec storage at that location. That's one of the, the best parts for Matt anyway, as far as getting the, the police department. Because we had really looked at that 9,000 square feet as possibly having to put some things over there as well. There's never enough storage in these buildings. I'll tell you that right off the bat. If he were to have to move all of his parks and rec stuff into this facility, we probably wouldn't have enough space. We'd be hanging things off the ceiling, so.
And there's really no need to.
No, this is kinda my plan right now, is to free up that, that garage storage area where the engineer was at. It's really not suited for offices. The second floor obviously is not ADA compliant, but it does work well for keeping things fairly dry and, and out of the elements. So that's kind of my current thought. Obviously, you, everybody sitting here will have a lot of say in how we do this when we get it all ready to go. I wanted to get the, the building, the PD closed, so we actually have it and then start talking about plans.
Lot of opportunity.
Yeah, one step at a time.
These are all good problems to have.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, any other questions? Otherwise, entertain a motion on the shelving.
I'll move to approve the Wellness Center shelving quote at $19,909.30.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Next item, Discussion and Consideration of Proposed Corporate Membership Rates. Chris?
So we hadn't settled on this when we talked about membership rates in general, but we wanted to, this is called corporate because we wanted to really have the ability to key in on the, the business community. We figured that, because we have a lot of small business in town, that we didn't wanna alienate business in general. So that's why you see the number 15. 10% was a solid number for them getting at least 15 members to sign up. It was well worth our time. It wasn't just tied directly to the big employers like Cornell. So, you know, when we consider employees, we wanted to look at Gary's and Brothers and, you know.
The banks.
The banks. So they'll have some work to do. I mean, they have to get 15 people that are gonna wanna sign up through their corporate membership to get the 10% discount. But we felt like if they kinda did some of that legwork for us, it was worth a 10% discount on those. So that's how we settled on everything. It's a basic one-page policy, but we're trying to get a lot of this finalized. We'll have rental rates at your next meeting, hopefully. And that was kinda the last big piece to the puzzle as far as things that we need to get out to market.
Is this just Mount Vernon businesses? Or would this apply to Aegon or?
It would apply to anybody. It's not limited to Mount Vernon businesses, but we didn't wanna alienate Mount Vernon businesses. So we had originally talked about a three-tiered system where you had 45 employees was the, the large. And we got to a point where we didn't wanna try and manage three different tiers. large, and we got to a point where we didn't want to try and manage three different tiers. Yeah, so we know that Transamerica has a presence, Collins Aerospace has a presence. I mean, if they want to get, somebody does for those groups, want to get everybody together and sign up as a package, like I said, they're doing some of that legwork for us, some of that marketing for us, so we didn't want to alienate anybody.
You've got Mercy, St. Luke's, you've got a lot of different places.
University of Iowa.
No, I don't really want to turn anybody away.
Right.
Right.
So one thought I had in looking at this was, it might be a little bit of a challenge to monitor, to ensure that those businesses maintain 15 or more people, and my only suggestion to Matt would be, have the business, the business point of contact be the person that does that, so you don't have to do that, because that would have to be a manual process, I would think. But if you have one point of contact at each of these places, and they give you the list...
So we would work with the one point of business contact, and we would, like, if somebody canceled their membership, we would share that with them, and then we would each converse about what number they're at, and have that conversation. If, hey, you're close, you're at 16, one more person, or two more people drop, then we, you know, can't really provide the corporate membership as it's written. So, yeah, absolutely, we would have that conversation on an ongoing basis. So I have to picture one person managing that, if within the facility, either myself or Sarah, and then having that point of contact for all of those Rockwell, Collins, and Aegon, and Transamericana, University of Iowa, the banks, you know, everybody. And so one person would be able to handle that, one person at the business, and one person at the facility would be able to manage that.
And I assume this would be, if I'm an employee of Aegon, and we have a group, and I do my family, it's not just individual, it's, as long as somebody in that grouping is a member of that, but is an employee.
Okay. Yeah. We're targeting actual membership type, so a family membership is one, an individual membership is one, senior membership is one, so even though you have four members in your family, it's still one membership.
Okay, gotcha.
If you follow me, so you'd have to get five, 15 memberships.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
So then one other question, and this might be way too granular for now, but is this sort of thing trackable within the membership software that we have?
Yes, so we'll create like a Rockwell membership, and then that'll be...
And then, so you could just pull a report and say how many Rockwells are active?
Yeah, exactly.
See, I was thinking it would have to be manual, this is good news.
Yeah, no, no, it'll be in the system, we'll be able to set up a Rockwell membership, so when somebody approaches and say, you know, they write down all the information, and, you know, where's your place of employment, if they say Rockwell, oh, hey, by the way, we have a Rockwell corporate membership, would you like to be a part of that? So the business doesn't have to do all the work, we can do some of it on the front end, they might not even know, they may be a new employee that hasn't been introduced to them, so we could still help people take advantage of that by customer service, so, yeah. But we'll be able to set up a separate membership, and the system itself says Rockwell, University of Iowa, Mount Vernon Bank, whatever it may be.
And I'm sure with that software, then you can share the information with those organizations, saying, hey, Matt has used the rec center five times this month, so he qualifies for a reimbursement through their wellness program.
We can do that through tracking, yep, absolutely, so if somebody wanted to ask us a question, and they get reimbursed, yeah, we can send them a report.
So just a question, there is a rate in here for seniors, have you considering, considered retirees of those organizations? Would they be, if they are qualified as a retiree of that organization, would they get the corporate rate? For example?
Yeah, that's a great question.
So I just wanted, it's a thought.
Yeah. I would assume if the...
Because there will be quite a few in the community, I would think.
Sure, 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 so we'd have to have a way of, the corporation would have to recognize them as probably being a previous employee. I would say yes.
As long as you get, you know, proof from that organization.
Yeah, and it depends on how we set it up, so there's...
And how far back do you want to go? Somebody retired 20 years ago.
Well, it's not to be a lot.
Yeah, I would work with the organization to see how comfortable they feel about that person being an individual on the membership.
So just a thought.
Because I know a lot of large organizations will not share that information with you in terms of, Matt, you retired 20 years ago, here's your current employment status, they won't share that information.
Yeah, and so the individual comes up and says, I'm a previous employer, I'm a previous employee of Rockwell, okay, how, you know, prove it.
I'm not saying previous employee, I'm saying retiree.
Sure.
Sure, but at that point, you are a previous employee.
Okay.
But I know what you mean, yeah.
Well, you would feel the difference.
That's what I meant, was you previously were employed by them, you retired with them, so somehow we'd have to have some type of recognition from the organization that you are a retired individual, and if Mr. Hampton's saying that they may not give you that information, then we may be to stop.
They would place that back on the shoulders of our contact.
Right, that's what I'm saying, because they're there.
And they still would get the senior discounts.
Yeah, there's, what is a senior discount?
There's that too, yeah, so, you know.
You're going to put me on the spot.
Is it 5% or something?
What's a senior discount?
What's a senior discount?
Well, a senior pays $30 for an individual, or $40 for a couple, on an annual membership.
Per month.
Per month, and the family is 60.
They already have a discounted rate.
The family is 55, excuse me, so, I mean, I don't know what the math is.
So whatever the math is, so.
So it's probably equivalent to 10% anyway, roughly, so it really don't matter.
Yeah, it's equivalent to that, I just don't have it on top of my head.
And we have a military?
Yeah, so we have a military, along with a student, and then the way we wanted to recognize retired military, or honorably discharged military would count as well, and I think there is pieces of paper that can prove that through the federal government, whatever means they have. So I've been talking with David Hoagland, I don't know if you guys know David Hoagland or not, but he's a retiree of the military, and he's been kind of talking me through some of the paperwork that's necessary for that, so I think it would be advantageous for us to do that.
At some point, you're going to have somebody who is retired military, employed by Collins, and a senior.
You want to get one.
I'm just saying, the, you know, think through this, which one do you want, but sooner or later, you're going to need somebody that, you know, drops a pebble in 13 different buckets, so.
You have to pay the individual.
Yeah, exactly, here's 20 bucks for showing up. Yeah, it's, we tried to make it not too complex, but it can get there if we get a certain individual.
They can get there quick. All right, thanks, Matthew.
Thank you.
Matt, did DeNovo advise you on this and the room rentals for next month? Have they had input to New York's era about?
On the rental rates?
Right.
No.
And/or in these rates?
Neither, neither, yeah, DeNovo did not have any impact, we'd already started working on this before we were hired, and they haven't had any input on it as of now.
There's going to be more about the launch, right?
Yeah, I think more focusing on...
The rates themselves have been research that we've conducted, just at other facilities, so on and so forth. DeNovo is simply going to take the information that we provide to them, and then market that.
And that's really the best...
They are going to help with the grand openings and things like that, and they, as we provide them information, they do make comments, it's not necessarily under their scope, but, yeah, Matt and I started talking about these before Sarah even started, so it's kind of been ongoing.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matthew. Entertain a motion on the membership rates?
So moved.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion consideration of repair and/or replacement of Twin Creeks Lift Station Pump, number one. Chris?
So this is another pump that is in need of repair. The repairs themselves would be about $7,615. The cost of a new pump is $18,889.87. I'm apt to go with Alex's recommendation, that we can look at the new pump, because we could, so should we decide to replace the Twin Creeks Lift Station at some point in the future, we could reuse the pump? The only bad part about the repair, the entire engine, it just goes through and corrects the items that are wrong with it today, so it's not a complete rebuild of the engine. We have no idea when the Twin Creeks Lift Station would be looked at, so it's all development-driven, and I think at this point, not a big fan of spending money and then potentially having to do this five years down the road, spend another $18,000, buy an additional pump, so...
How old is this pump now?
I forget what Alex said, it's over 13 years old.
Is there any value in keeping the pump, and if we need some, I don't know, part-it-out kind of thing, I don't know?
So could we keep it for parts? Yeah, but there would be a limited number of parts that we could probably reuse. Most of the things that go bad on these pumps are seals and moving equipment, so just wear and tear over the time. We can look at it when they pull it, and see whether or not it would be advantageous for us.
My only thought, Dan, I would kind of believe that in both of these numbers, a fair amount of that is just getting in and getting at it, and getting it out, and then putting it back in, so if we pull it out, and instead of seven, it's five to fix it, or I don't know, whatever.
Yeah, it's a lot like getting your car fixed, I mean, the labor is a significant chunk.
Yeah, if you look, there's a lot of seals, and O-rings, and gaskets, and...
Yeah, bearing seals, I mean, those are typically the first things to go.
Yeah.
Well, for almost half of it, I would be in favor of just buying a new one.
Yeah. Does anybody else agree with Scott?
I do, given that it's a less than $10,000 difference.
Plus, it's a 13-year-old pump.
Yeah, exactly, that's the key piece right there.
It was a five-year-old pump.
Then that's a different conversation.
Yep.
In that case, I would make a motion to replace the Twin Creek Lift Station pump, the replacement cost of $18,889.87.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion consideration of professional services agreement with Hall and Hall Engineers for the Elliott Park Expansion Project.
We're getting ready to close on a five-acre purchase of Elliott Park. The Public Works employees are getting close to finishing the grading at the Public Works site, we would like to move the dozer to the Elliott Park, so we can get the grading done, and hopefully get some fall dormant seed down before winter takes hold. To expedite that, Hall and Hall is our, we're the engineers for Scovent and that development, so they have everything already shot. It just makes sense, I feel like, to go ahead and continue with their services, because they can save us probably a little bit of time and money, since we've already been out there. I did want to point out, although it had zero discussion, that one of the Parks and Rec Board members is an employee of Hall and Hall, but had absolutely nothing to do with the recommendation here. So far, everything that has gone on in that development, that they've been a part of, has come out really well, and I think Nick would concur, that it makes a lot of sense for us to continue utilizing their services, so.
So this is them putting the grading plan together, this is still Nick and his guys?
Grading plan, and then it's like a master plan. We haven't really decided for sure, we believe that we're going to tier the five acres for drainage, but also to...
More flat space.
More flat space, and again, most of it will be utilized for soccer, so, but if we, we really feel like if we can get a dormant seed in this fall, then it kind of, we won't likely be playing on it next spring, but we have an opportunity, you know, next fall to potentially have that space.
I'm making motion to approve Hall and Hall Engineering for the Elliott Park Extension, including the two level grading and parking lot extension.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion consideration of ADS purchase, Public Works Site. Chris?
We have some culverts that we need to put in. If you haven't been out there, I've been super impressed with the amount of work that's been going on, the amount of dirt that's been coming and going from the site. The ADS piping, we have two quotes in there, one for $65.35, and the other one is $66.71, so you can tell that they're pretty close in price, but recommending that we purchase the pipe for $65.35. Brown supply.
So I got to ask, on that brown supply one, did they just do the math on the numbers that we put in there?
No, Nick did the math.
Or did they provide the cost per unit?
They gave the unit cost, Nick did the math.
Oh, okay. Okay, so you're the one writing in, you made the column, okay. I thought they had, and I was like, couldn't we have just done that? Like, what, how is this at all a bid?
I needed a unit price for none of them.
Okay, I got, okay.
Took advantage of the two big distributors out of the Super Rapids area.
Okay.
What's ADS stand for?
Yeah, what did we come up with, Matt? Matt asked me the same question.
Something drainage system?
Advanced.
Applied?
Applied? Apple? I don't know, what are we doing?
Is it concrete, is it like?
It's plastic pipe.
Oh, classic.
It's a black tubing.
So...
Oh, is it the corrugated type with the smooth inside?
Yep, double wall.
If you drive along AD, you can see.
The ADS plant right by Tiffany.
Okay, I know where it is.
They have some high-performance stuff that they came out with three or four years ago, that we've allowed them to use in Stone Brook, and then the new Stone Brook Development, it's all to suit aspects, so it's, we're going to put some of this high-performance stuff underneath our driveways, along with the current Bryant Road, that's going to be a gravel road for a short amount of time here, but it's, it's all suit us, approved, so.
Advanced drainage systems.
Yeah, it's, apparently even...
It's just, it's funny to me that there's low-performance pipe and high-performance pipe.
It won't break when you hit it with an excavator.
Okay, that's good enough, that's performance.
And plus, you don't have to have as much coverage over it, probably, too.
Correct, yes. With the typical double-wall pipe, you need three to four foot of coverage, and we don't have that in some areas, and also usually underneath traffic, this whole project was bid as they wanted concrete pipe, in order to save costs, and knowing that it's our site, and that if there's any repairs needed, currently, you know, we'll figure that out prior to hopefully putting asphalt street or concrete street out there, so.
Good.
In that case, I would move approval of the bid in the amount of $6,535 for the high-performance ADS piping.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next item reports. Chief, anything you want to highlight for the council, or anything else you need to add, sir?
Nothing, it's not in the report, unless you have questions.
He's still in the 9.
Yeah. I was going to say, it looks like a pretty busy month.
It's going to be a few, a few of those coming.
Yeah.
Anybody have anything for Chief? Nothing, all right. Nick, same question, do you, sir?
Nothing to add.
Anybody have anything for Nick?
I saw something about leaves in there, Nick, I'm excited.
Just saying. Probably more excited than the staff.
Yeah, I know. I know.
All right, nothing, nothing? Matthew, same question, do you, sir?
Nothing to report, sir.
Anybody have anything for Matt? Nope, anybody?
You had, Matt, you had numbers about pool in terms of, you know, general attendance, where are, how are we on the budget for pool?
Oh, don't ask about the pool budget.
Well, I mean, from where you thought you would, I know we had equipment costs and
stuff, but I'm talking about the numbers based on the weather days and attendance, that's what I'm talking about.
We're on par, so, but we have a few expenses that we've had to incur, new lap lanes.
We know about that. We know about the...
The new chemical building and all that, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just talking about attendance projections and weather.
Yeah, as far as attendance and those things, and concessions and all of that, we're on par, so we're not declining, but we're in the first part of our budget year of this year, July, so it's hard to gauge that. We'll know better in August, if it's there.
Yeah, from a dollars standpoint, coming into City Hall, we've got some really solid plays this summer, where you get excited about that, got tempered real fast when we fixed the bathrooms, you know, so, yeah, I would definitely say that we're on par, you know, as everything, the closer we get to school, as soon as football camp starts back up, volleyball camp starts back up, cross-country, I mean, band.
You lose staff fast.
We lose staff, but we also lose people, generally, coming, but...
What's the last day of operation, Matt?
It'll be September 3rd.
Labor Day weekend, right?
Yeah, September, sorry, September 3rd will be the last day, so that's our doggy swim. Sorry, Nick. September 4th will start draining. September 4th will start draining the pool.
And the dog hair.
And the dog hair, yes, out of the filter.
While you're here, and speaking of Nick, there was a bullet in his deal about dimensions of the fields, and like some equipment that was allowed, like you guys buried something